Hello, my name is D2 Kasui and I welcome you to the Urban Financial Services Coalition National Special Session featuring JP Morgan Chase's Advancing Black Pathways Program. And for tonight's agenda, we'll have a welcome, we will also have some networking, and we'll hear from the Urban Financial Services Coalition National President, then we'll introduce our speaker, we'll have a conversation, we'll have a Q&amp;A period for people to actually ask questions, and then we will go over some miscellaneous upcoming events with the organization. And so, we will have all of you go to a breakout room, and in your breakout room, we'll have an opportunity for you to talk with your fellow colleagues from across the nation. And in your breakout room, we'd like for you to share your name, your company, and one thing that you're currently excited about, and how others can share in your excitement. And that's one thing that we believe in at Urban Financial Services Coalition, is that we should always take an opportunity to network, get to know each other better, better, and find opportunities for us to build on our relationship. And that's one of the hallmarks of being a part of Urban Financial Services Coalition. And now, I would like to turn it over to our National President, Ms. Ola True Love, out of Kansas City, and she will bring a few remarks on behalf of the national organization.
I want to some of our national past presidents and say to you that I would love to visit with you and get engaged again with you. I know I saw Ann Bush on the call, and I'm not sure who else was on the call that's from a national level as a previous president, but I certainly honor that you joined us this evening. With everything going on, I was sharing with the breakout group that I was in, that this time is so important for us, it's so important that we are able to get our voices heard, that we are actually understanding the importance of education, and that for all of our people, people of color, but particularly Black Lives Matter, and we stand strong in an effort to make sure that we are communicating in a positive manner to all the people. I've been around, I was sharing in banking for 44 years in September, but been associated with the Urban Financial Services Coalition, the Kansas City chapter for the last 22 years. So I welcome all of you all, I want us to be engaged, I want us to be informed, and I want us to be involved. So I certainly request your participation. If you're not a member, please join and help us make this organization one of the strongest and one of the best in the nation. Thank you very much, Mr. Kasui.
Yes, thank you President True Love, and President True Love, she is just an amazing leader, and she's one of those leaders that, you know, she cuts straight to the chase, you know? She tells you what she needs and she expects you to get it done. That's why I'm on the call of the day. So before we get into the midst of everything, I just want to make sure that we're all following good digital body language. And so, the way good digital body language works is that when you're on the program, you know, like today, as much as possible, if you don't have anything in your background, you know, please be on the screen so that we can see you and we know that you're engaged. It's almost like being in a Baptist church, you need some call and response. But we want virtual call and response. And the way you do that, if you hear something that you really like, you know, you can just lean forward, you know, lean forward to the camera, you know, and that way people know like, okay, you're paying attention. And then it really helps if you nod your head, like, oh yeah, 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 that's working for me, right? Then that lets the speaker know that they, oh man, they're really getting it done. Or you can go electronic, you know, electronic, you can use, you can put your thumbs up. Can I get a thumbs up from everybody? Put your thumbs up. You know, electronic, you can find your thumbs up button, you know, hear something that you like, you get your thumbs up. Okay, oh man, we even got some light-skinned thumbs up, okay? Some people found, got some matte color coordinate their look. That's box skin, light skin, got all kinds of thumbs up, okay, excellent. And then you can always clap your hands, you know, can I get some hand claps? Okay, all right, excellent, excellent, after hand claps go. And so, while we're having this conversation, it's good for us to see these digital things, know that we're going along. And also, what we would like to do is if you have a question, you know, please, you can send a question into the chat, and when we get to the Q&amp;A period, we will read some of those, and then we will also take some audience questions. So if you want to have a question, you can raise your hand. So you can look at the raise your hand function, and then, you know, I will acknowledge you, allow you to ask your question of our speaker. So we have laid the ground rules for today. So now, we're ready to get started. Today, we have a young man who is amazing. We have an amazing young man who is the Head of Communication for Advancing Black Pathways at JP Morgan Chase, which is an initiative aimed at helping black community, helping the black community historical gaps in wealth management, educational achievement, and long-term career success. Prior to joining JP Morgan Chase, our speaker tonight was the Vice President of Digital Content Strategy at Goldman Sachs, and he brings more than a decade, he just got off the boat yesterday, he brings over a decade of experience in the financial service industry as a financial industry editor, writer, and content strategist. His experience includes internal and external communications roles at Fidelity Investments and Oppenheimer Funds. And before entering the financial services industry, our speaker was a journalist at the Thomson Reuters and the ABC News Executive Unit, and today, he teaches journalism at Long Island University in Brooklyn, New York. Ladies and gentlemen, can we give a big hand clap, virtual hand clap, to Justin P. Grant? Justin, how are you?
Oh, thank you, thank you for that glowing intro, I appreciate you, D2.
Absolutely, absolutely, well, we appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to talk with us tonight about what JP Morgan Chase is doing and what you're doing to make a difference in our community. And before we talk shop, you know, why don't you tell us, you know, how you are currently handling the COVID-19 pandemic?
Yeah, you know, it's tough times, I haven't seen my mom in three months, haven't seen my father, and longer than that, he lives down in Tampa, Florida. And it's just tough not seeing parents, it's tough not getting to hang out with your friends. I am gonna do a socially-distanced bike ride in honor of Father's Day with some friends of mine, you know, on this Saturday, which I'm excited about. But it's been tough, you know, just being separated, the social distance is tough, we're social animals, and that piece is just against who we are as human beings, you can't even go to a worship service, you know, that piece of it is tough. But on the flip side, I am thankful for the time at home with my family, you know, we, Sekou and I, went and rode a lot, I think we hit 13 or 14 cities, two countries last year, and it's nice to be home, I have two young children, and I'm getting to see them every day, I get to interact with them every day, and, you know, it's just nice to be able to be around my family, you know, that piece, I wouldn't trade that for anything.
Oh, absolutely, so tell me, what is one thing you've learned about yourself during the COVID-19? And what is one activity that COVID-19 has enabled you to do that you weren't able to do when you were so busy?
Oh, man, you know, it's funny, I'm actually busier than I've ever been at work, like, we are firing on all cylinders. I had this vision of, oh man, there's this book project that I want to make some progress on, I should have time for that, that hasn't happened, you know, because we're so busy, busier than ever at work. But on the weekends, I've gotten some home improvement projects done that I'm excited about, got my deck finished last week, which I'm excited about, so, you know, I'm doing some stuff, I'm not doing everything I expected to be doing though, you know, because we are just, it's from the minute you wake up to the minute you go to bed, we are grinding it out, because it's a tough time right now in the black community, and, you know, with advancing black pathways, we're trying to do everything we can, so just firing on all cylinders right now.
Absolutely, absolutely, well, you know, that's one of the things, you know, COVID has, you know, allowed us to do some things that we haven't been able to do, and in the midst of that, we have, you know, had some of the unrest that's been going on, and then that, you know, brings us to, you know, the things that we're passionate about and the good work that people are doing. And I read in your bio, you know, the kind of success that you have as a journalist and at Goldman Sachs, and now you're at JP Morgan Chase, you know, tell us, you know, who have been your role models and what has inspired you, you know, to work in the financial services industry?
Yeah, you know, it's funny, so my role model is a man named Juan Simpson, he is my uncle, and he was a CFO over at J&amp;J Pharmaceuticals years ago. You know, he was part of that generation of black executives that then in the late 80s, early 90s were really, you know, paving the way for us, you know, getting into the C-suites, and he actually passed away in 2002, but, you know, he defined manhood for me, he defined what it meant to be successful for me, and he was my role model, he's literally the only person in my life I've ever had a need to prove myself to, and, you know, I wouldn't be where I'm at, you know, professionally or personally if it wasn't for him. In terms of what got me into financial services, it's funny, you know, coming up when I was in college, you know, I was fixated on sports, you know, I wanted to be a sport reporter, you know, Stephen A. Smith, I thought he had my dream job, that's what I was thinking about, but when I was in college at Long Island University in Brooklyn, New York, I landed an internship with Bloomberg News, and I actually interned with them for two summers back in 2004 and 2005, and that got me my first exposure to the capital markets, and I covered consumer and retail companies as an intern reporter, and I thought it was fascinating, you know, to write about the capital markets, and that led to my first job at Thomson Reuters, where I covered stocks, I wrote a weekly column on IPOs, and then I transitioned over to TV, I was an investigative reporter for a while, and I spent a lot of time working on the Bernie Madoff story, and that got me really interested in the capital markets. I did a lot of cool things on that story, I went on undercover stakeouts outside of his son's house down in Lower Manhattan, his name was Mark Madoff, he wound up killing himself, and I would be on stakeouts for days. It turned out that he lived in the same building as Bon Jovi and Kanye West, so I got to see some celebrities, you know, coming in and out of the building, but it turned out that Mark Madoff was only leaving the house in the middle of the night to walk his dog, you know, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, then he'd go back in, so I never caught him on camera, and then unfortunately, he committed suicide. But that, all of those experiences got me interested in capital markets, and that's kind of where I'm at today, that's what led me on this path.
Absolutely, absolutely, you know, the financial services industry is one of those industries that people, very few people, you know, in first grade, you know, say that they want to work in the financial services industry, you know, and that's one of the purposes that Urban Financial Services Coalition is here and some of the programs that you're working on, you know, we're trying to change that, because this is a great field for us. So let's talk a little about your current role at JP Morgan Chase. Pete, tell us the backstory about how JP Morgan Chase came up with the Advancing Black Pathways Initiative?
Yeah, you know, I have to really give all the credit for that to our leadership. So it starts with Tashawna Duckett, the head of the Consumer Bank, you know, she's a true visionary, and she really, I believe, was the driving force behind creating the Advancing Black Pathways Initiative. And then I also have to give credit to Jamie Dimon for creating that safe space for Tashawna to create this program and, you know, recognize the problems that the black community is facing, and also recognize the opportunities, right? You know, 1 in 5 African-Americans doesn't have a bank account, but on the flip side, our spending power is equivalent of Russia's GDP. So, you know, if you can bank this population, if you can become the bank of choice for this population, and there's a real opportunity for your banks, I think they also recognize the opportunity that you can really make some inroads as a firm, both from a business standpoint and then also from a talent standpoint, right? You know, you think about the companies that perform the best these days, those are the companies that have the stronger track records on diversity, they don't have homogenous, you know, corner offices and C-suites, they have a diversity of perspectives that they're bringing, and, you know, I think that was also part of it, leadership recognized, we can't have all white men running this company, we need diverse perspectives that reflect the communities that we serve.
Absolutely, absolutely, so, you know, I mean, it's good, I mean, we've had, you know, we've talked with Mr. Dimon before, he's spoken at Urban Financial Services Coalition conferences in the past, and he's supported members of JP Morgan Chase, who were members of the organization, and individuals who, we have former National President that was a member, that was an employee for JP Morgan Chase. So, you know, it does say something when a leader creates a space, you know, to deal with issues and have opportunities for people to move forward. So why don't you tell us or give us an overview of the program, and what are the key components of the program?
Yeah, yeah, it's a good question, so Advancing Black Pathways, as you mentioned earlier, it was a program that JP Morgan Chase launched in early 2019, and it's aimed at helping the black community close historical gaps in three key areas. So that's the racial wealth gap, you know, we're being intentional about getting people on a path to long-term wealth creation, so that's our wealth pathway. And then there is our education and careers pathways. So you look at educational achievement, there's a big gap there. Only 46% of black college students complete a bachelor's program within six years, and there's a variety of socioeconomic reasons for that. It's not that we are not talented or smart, we're dealing with a lot of other factors as a community that prevents us from finishing school, so education is a real focus, and, you know, we have a lot of initiatives underway to support getting our students across that academic finish line. And then finally, there's the careers pathway, you know, we're focused on hiring black talent at all levels, so we're trying to cultivate black interns, black apprentices, get them on a pathway to entry-level jobs at the firm. And then we're also looking to cultivate that senior-level talent, so we don't want just white male M.D.s and executive directors, we want black people in those spots. By and large, we're very well underrepresented in these offices, there's a stat, you know, we are roughly 13% of the US population, but we occupy less than 8% of these white college jobs, and we occupy an even smaller percentage of the jobs in the C-suite. I mean, you can count on one hand the number of black CEOs that are running Fortune 500 companies, and, you know, we've got to change that, we've got to do better.
Absolutely, well, could you go a little bit deeper on, you know, talking about, you know, how the program focuses on breaking that middle barrier? The Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago has what they call the Pipeline Initiative, and they've done a lot of work in their region, and they have indicated that where we run into most of the problems is when we get to that middle section, and now we're trying to break into that, you know, that next level of leadership, and when people get frustrated, they end up leaving. And they also indicated that if we continue to do what we have been doing, you know, the supply of African-Americans, the number of people who are available, right? You know, will go down in the industry. So what kinds of things are you specifically looking at to try to break people through that glass ceiling?
Yeah, that's a great question, you know, a lot of us do hit that mid-level, and it's harder, it's easier to go from the entry level to the mid-level, then it's much harder to go from that mid-level to the higher level. So we have our Advancing Black Leaders Initiative, that was launched back in 2016, and that was an intentional effort aimed at growing the number of black executive directors at JP Morgan Chase as well as managing directors. And that program has been underway for about four years now, and they've had some decent success. We are, since over the last three and a half years, we have increased the number of black E.D.s and M.D.s at JP Morgan Chase by more than 50%. So there is some progress there, but when you think about, it's a company with roughly 250,000 employees, we still got a long way to go, and there's more to be done. And, you know, Sekou and I, you know, we were overseas last year, we were, you know, traveled to the UK, you know, there's not any senior-level black talent really, everybody maxes out at that VP level in the UK. It's even worse down in Brazil, you know, most of the black talent there is analysts and associates, you don't even have VPs for executive directors, let alone managing directors. So there's a lot of work to be done on a global level, and I think the first three and a half years of that program, you know, laid a strong foundation, but we've got more work to do, and so how are they doing that work with accountability? You know, Jamie is holding his leaders to the, he's holding their feet to the fire. You know, he is requiring that diversity is prioritized in our firm, you know, people are being held accountable, you know, as part of the review process for leaders, that, how are you taking this into account? So he's holding people's feet to the fire, we've got more work to do, and, you know, Advancing Black Leaders is leading the charge on that front.
Okay, thank you for your answer on that. Can you talk a little bit on, you know, what y'all are doing on the front end of the pipeline? You know, how, you know, how are you getting, you know, people excited about coming into the industry so that they can, you know, be grown into these roles?
Yeah, that's a great question, so for starters, we are committed through Advancing Black Pathways to hiring 4,000 black students over the next five years. We set that goal last year, actually, and we're about 1/4 of the way there, so we've hired 1,000. And these are three types of roles that we're trying to hire towards that 4,000. It's apprentices, and I'll talk more about the apprentice program in a bit, there's the intern level, and then there's the entry-level analyst level. And, you know, we structured it, we were very intentional about structuring it in this way for a reason. To get an internship at JP Morgan Chase, you know, it gets you on a pathway to that entry-level role. Like, if you get an internship here, you do well, you have a good chance of getting a full-time job with us, you know, once you complete your internship. Those roles only go to upperclassmen though, so those are the juniors and the seniors in college that get those intern roles. We want more black students on that pipeline to internships, and that's why we created the Advancing Black Pathways Apprentice Program. And so, these are underclassmen, so your rising freshmen and sophomores are getting those roles, and it's an interesting opportunity, right? These students spend roughly six weeks every summer, it's a little shorter this year because of the COVID pandemic, we're paying them the same amount for the full summer, but it was shortened this year, and it's a virtual program. But these apprentices get an opportunity to work on real-world challenges that our business banking clients are facing, and these clients are black entrepreneurs in five cities. So it's New York, Wilmington, Delaware, DC, Plano, Texas, and Columbus, Ohio. So we have black entrepreneurs at each of those locations. We take our apprentices who come from historically black colleges and universities and give them an opportunity to work on these projects, so they gain a lot of really great experience, they learn about entrepreneurship as well, and, you know, you get exposure to things, it opens your mind. You know, we're trying to cultivate black entrepreneurs, that's, those are the people that are really gonna move the needle on the racial wealth gap and the hiring gaps, are the black job creators, so we want to expose them to that. And it's just been a net positive, we actually expanded the program this year into New York and DC, you know, we started in the other three cities, so expanded the program, we have more students, and we're pretty excited about it.
Absolutely, can you talk about how important it is? One of the things that Urban Financial Services Coalition, we have a program called the Mark One Leadership Program, and part of what we do in that program is talk about young people having productive summers. So, you know, it seems like, you know, how important is it for them to work in the job field that they may have a job in versus working at, you know, driving Uber? You know, unless they're gonna do, you know, Uber, you know, that's their internship, but tell us the importance of having a productive summer?
I'll tell you, a productive summer for a college student makes all the difference in the world. I will tell you, I didn't always have productive summers when I was in college. So I, my freshman summer, I actually worked as a day laborer in Tampa, Florida. You know, my mom got on me, I didn't find an internship, didn't have a job in New York, I said, all right, I'm going to just stay with my father for the summer, and he's like, you ain't sitting around doing nothing. So I went down to this local office, Labor Pool, and I'm working with, like, immigrant workers, I'm out there with Mexican-Americans, you know, black Americans, and we grinding, 5 o'clock in the morning till 5 o'clock at night, you know, putting tar on rooftops, you know, working in holds of ships, I mean, just crazy stuff that had nothing to do with the path that I wanted to be on, nothing to do with my major. And I resolved myself, look, I'm not doing that another summer, I gotta get focused, and wound up landing the internship at Bloomberg News, and I can tell you that that internship changed the course of my life, you know? You gotta have a productive summer when you're in college, it lays the groundwork for your career, and it communicates to employers that this young person is a prospect, they have what it takes. You know, you establish your resume, you get socialized into corporate life, you start to learn, you know, those soft skills, you learn socialization, and for black students, that's critical, because, you know, we're entering venues, we are outnumbered. You know, when I was in Bloomberg, when I was interning at Bloomberg, it was the first time I was the only one of us, you know, I go into that newsroom, those places are very white, and they're not just very white, they're very, you know, upper-class white, these are people who come from a certain type of background, they come from money, and I'm just, I'm this poor black kid from Brooklyn, so I'm getting socialized into that environment. And you have to learn how to become comfortable in your own skin, you have to learn how to carve out your own niche, and I'll be real with you, it's hard. It's a baptism by fire, and I think for black college students, it's critical that they get it, and that there are organizations like this, and people like you all on this call to shepherd them and guide them and, you know, provide that gentle hand, because you need it, because you're not only getting beat up, you know, as you earn your stripes professionally, but you're doing that as a black person, and it's doubly tough, I speak from experience, as I'm sure everybody on this call can relate to.
Absolutely, absolutely, definitely seen some thumbs ups and some claps to that. I want to take one step back, and we gave the three areas that the program focuses on, which is the wealth gap, education, and careers. You know, what's the scorecard? How are y'all measuring success? And how can, you know, how is the leadership holding people accountable to meeting the scorecard?
Yeah, no, that's another great question, so, you know, we have a massive challenge, and we'll start with the wealth pathway, for example. We have the racial wealth gap, which is, it's growing, you know, it's been moving in the wrong direction for years, and if we don't reverse the current trends, the median wealth for black people in this country is going to be zero by 2053, you know, if we don't reverse the current trends, and, you know, the reality is, you know, we're in crisis. And, you know, the reality is, you know, we're in crisis, you know, between that. There's been a divergence, right? So we had been making gains after the civil rights movement, after the passage of fair lending back in 1968. But we've been moving in the wrong direction since the early 80s. You know, and I have a stat for you. Between 1983 and 2013, white households saw their wealth increase by 14%. But during that same period, we've seen our wealth decrease by 75%, which is horrifying. And so part of it, it's 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 certain things, right? We don't own stocks. So we just came out of the longest bull market in history. And most of us had no exposure to equities during that bull market. So we don't own stocks. If we do have wealth, it's tied up in our house. And so a lot of our wealth was wiped out with the global financial crisis in 2008. So we recognize that we're in a state of crisis and we've got to do something. So it starts with education for a lot of us. And that's, you know, Sandra Davis is on the call. We launched Currency Conversations with Essence last year. And we were very intentional. We actually reached more than, we got, we reached more than 16,000 people through the Currency Conversations campaign. We opened up our branches, brought women into the branches, and they engaged in honest dialogue about, you know, what it takes to get financially healthy. We had Sandra leading the way, providing those tips. People were sharing their stories. And, you know, we got real with people. We wanted to build trust with people. We opened our branches and held these events across the country. So that was just one venue of educating people about personal finance. This year, we've built on Currency Conversations. We've launched a series called Chase Chats. And so we're looking to do thousands of Chase chats across the country this year. So it's the same principle. You open up the branch, people come in, and you engage them in dialogue and open their eyes to, you know, what it takes to get financially healthy. And we're being very intentional about getting this content in front of the black community. So in terms of metrics, we're trying to do well over 100,000 Chase chats as a company. I could tell you that. And, you know, these things, they're virtual now. We can't have mass gatherings, but we're trying to get this information out on a mass scale. Additionally, just on that wealth side, we are focused on advancing black entrepreneurship. Black entrepreneurs are the job creators in our community. You know, if we can, and there's a stat out there, if if, and this applies not just to black entrepreneurs, but entrepreneurs of color. If entrepreneurs of color owned businesses at the same rate as white entrepreneurs, it would create 9 million more jobs and pump roughly $300 billion into the US economy. And so, you know, we're trying to, for people who want to take risks and start businesses, you know, we have developed content to engage them. I can tell you from personal experience, I'm the one in my family with a job. My wife has her own business. She launched an experiential marketing firm back in 2018. And, you know, it's just amazing, you know, the way you make money when you own your own business versus when you are an employee. And so we launched a new initiative earlier this year called Advancing Black Entrepreneurs. And we partnered with, so we need to achieve scale in getting our educational content out to the entrepreneurs. And trust is an issue for the black community with banks. You know, JP Morgan Chase, you can Google JP Morgan Chase and racism, and all sorts of stuff is going to come up. So trust is a factor. So to build trust, to connect with entrepreneurs, we partnered with four organizations to get our content to their membership. So one is the National Urban League. The second is US Black Chambers. The third is the National Minority Supplier Development Council. And the fourth is Black Enterprise. And so we have a major announcement coming out in July. I can't share it just yet, but I can tell you that it's aimed at helping black entrepreneurs build relationships with us. You know, a lot of black entrepreneurs don't have relationships with banks. That's why a lot of them had trouble getting access to the Paycheck Protection Program funding when the CARES Act was passed. So we're trying to build relationships with as many black entrepreneurs as possible. And at minimum, we want to reach 1,000 businesses per organization that we're partnering with with the content. That's at minimum. And so we have some really exciting things happening there. That's just the wealth side. And you can't talk about wealth without talking about housing. And we have more to do there. I can tell you that for a fact. Housing is the largest generator of intergenerational wealth transfer in this country. And we've got to do more. I can tell you that the conversations happening at our firm to make us do better on that front in terms of home lending. That's just the wealth side.
Absolutely. If you don't mind, you want to touch a couple of metrics on the education and the and the career side? I know you gave us a little bit about 50%, you know, increase on the career side. Any other metrics?
So that's pretty much it for the career side. But I can tell you that with education, we recently launched a Student Financial Hardship Fund back in February. And so I alluded earlier to the fact that a lot of our students are not getting over the academic finish line and not finishing. And there's research out there showing that financial issues are a big reason for that. A lot of us also, when we go to college, we're not just the typical college student that's free to go to class. We have other family obligations. A lot of us are first generation students. And so we launched a Student Financial Hardship Fund early this year. We're funding the program. We're administering the funds through the United Negro College Fund and the Thurgood Marshall College Fund. And students are able to access these funds to pay for things like outstanding tuition balances, textbooks, emergency travel home, groceries, apartment deposits, you know, any short term emergency you can think of that would cause a student to have to delay going to class or temporarily drop out, whatever it is, you know, we're there to step in with this money. I can tell you that it's provided timely help during this COVID-19 pandemic. A lot of students had to leave school and had nowhere to go. We were able to help them get emergency housing and, you know, deal with practical issues, travel home after campuses closed. So very timely help with the Student Financial Hardship Fund, for starters. Additionally, education on personal finance is critical. And so earlier this year, we launched e-learning modules for students to engage in learning about basic personal finance topics. And so those went out. We're trying to reach at least 6,000 students through the United Negro College Fund. So students who have received scholarships through UNCF, we're reaching them with this content. So 6,000, 6,000 students reached there. And, you know, it's 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 been timely. Additionally, in terms of success metrics, in our first year of Advancing Black Pathways, we doubled the number of black suppliers of professional services to JP Morgan Chase. We helped more than a million customers start saving automatically with as little as a dollar a day. And then we provided free access to more than 20 million consumers so they can get their credit score. So we've been doing a lot. I could tell you that. And we're a small but mighty team.
Absolutely, absolutely. We know, you know what the reward is for doing good work.
More work.
That's right. More work, more work. So one other thing, I want to stop right here. I've got a couple of questions in the chat that I want to throw out to you, Justin. The first one is JP Morgan Chase's Advancing Black Pathways Initiative was launched prior to the most recent Black Lives Matter. How has the Black Lives Matter movement expedited the efforts of the program?
I can tell you that we are looking, I'm so thankful for the current protests. You know, I am saddened, you know, by the death of George Floyd. I'm saddened by how he died. I'm saddened by Breonna Taylor. I'm saddened by the loss of the brother that we just lost out in Atlanta. It's been really painful, but they don't have to die in vain, right? And I'm thankful that these latest incidents, plus the brother Ahmaud Arbery, and and the incident in Central Park, like these incidents have caused our bank to acknowledge the issue of systemic racism. And we're taking a look at it at the highest levels. And so I'm thankful for this. And I think that we're gonna, you know, Advancing Black Pathways was underway, and it's great what we're doing. But I think you're gonna see more from JP Morgan with home lending. You're gonna see more from JP Morgan on helping, you know, black people advance their careers. We have another major announcement. I'm actually working on the press release right now. It's coming out next week. So some more stuff on careers that I can't share yet on this call. You're gonna see more in all of these areas. Because leadership is like, hey, wait a second, we gotta do more. This isn't good enough. ABP is great, but we can do more. We're the largest bank in this country, and we want to be the leader in this space. We're not just gonna be out there throwing money at things like you might see other banks do. We're taking a really hard look at, you know, business practices that can move the needle in in mitigating and closing these systemic gaps, these racial gaps that we see. So I'm actually, I'm thankful and I'm hopeful for this current moment.
Yeah, absolutely. And so while we're talking about that, and, you know, one of the questions that we got from the chat is, you know, how much of the pie of the budget, you know, do you think that JP Morgan Chase is willing to commit to this effort in terms of advancing black pathways and, you know, dealing with systemic racism? You know, that permeates, you know, in a lot of different areas. You know, because a lot of times when you look at a company, you know, you kind of look at, you know, where do they, what they do with that excess money? Where are they investing that? What will be some of your your comments about that?
Well, I can tell you that the company is looking at these issues as bigger than Advancing Black Pathways. You know, we just hired Brian Lamb to head up global diversity and inclusion for the firm. He joined back in April, and he's taken a look at everything that we're doing. He's a brother, he's a sharp guy. Make sure to to look him up, you know, at your leisure. But we're looking, it goes beyond Advancing Black Pathways. And I can tell you that, you know, I can't give you our budget figure, but I can tell you it is not small. Because they recognize the scope of this problem and that it requires an investment to drive meaningful impact. And I think that the company has been, you know, judging by their track record, you know, they're serious about this. And Jamie, you know, he wants to know that this is working, you know, and he's holding us accountable. So, you know, I can tell you that we're not getting the short end of the stick on that end at all.
Okay, absolutely. I got a chat in here is actually from Austin, who said that he had an opportunity, Dean Austin, the opportunity to work with, you know, Seku when he was at the Federal Reserve. And one of the things that was instrumental to his success was, you know, having great mentors. And so he'd really want to know, you know, what are some of the metrics that Chase has regarding black males versus female? Black female representation within leadership and middle management?
So we actually have publicly facing data that I'd be happy to share with you that breaks down. It's our workforce composition data. And it provides a nice breakdown of male versus female. It offers the ethnicity information. And truth be told, it goes a little bit farther than, you know, what most companies are required to provide under the EEOC regulations. So I'm happy to share that with you, and then you can forward it to the brother who had that question. We'd be happy to give you some insight into that for sure.
Yeah, that'd be some great data. That's one of the things in the financial services industry, you know, under Doc 342, they really talk about, you know, there's not enough data, you know, out there. And, you know, it's voluntary for institutions to provide that information to their regulators. And so we appreciate JP Morgan Chase taking the lead and setting a good example by sharing that information. That is powerful, because it's hard to quantitate, quantify, you know, the problem without data.
Right. And you want to track your improvement over time and see, you know, where you're growing, where you're regressing and adjusted needed.
Absolutely, absolutely. We got a question from a young man out of Richmond. He wanted to know, what advice do you have for someone in the financial services industry trying to get others interested in the financial services as well? And also, what can be done in our own firms to initiate similar efforts in the black community?
So the first question is how to get others interested, younger people interested in careers in financial services? I think, you know, just judging from my own experience, you have to, as a start, and maybe there's a way to combine trying to get your company started with, you know, trying to reach young people. You know, bring these folks in, you know. See if you can identify, you know, whether it's a school, whether it's, you know, local boys and girls club. I don't know, whatever it is, maybe it's through a church. But leverage an organization that can get you an audience of these young people, you know, decent number. It can be modest and and try to get in front of them. You know, whether you make a visit to their organization or you bring them to your office. I think you have to connect directly with people to show them what it's all about. Show them what the opportunity is. You know, it's definitely an interesting career. I think they should get insight into the type of living you can earn, right? These are really well paying jobs that don't require you to bounce a basketball or, you know, write catchy rhymes. Like, you can really live a nice lifestyle. I think it's important to give them insights into that. You know, it's and and the other piece is, if financial services touches on just about every aspect of life, right? You know, you can be interested in so many different areas, and financial services gives you an opportunity to connect with them, you know. I was interested in sports, but then I became more interested in the business of sports, the money behind it, how the owners made their money. And it led me deeper down that wormhole. You know, maybe you're interested in technology or science, you know. Financial services, you know, we finance a lot of the companies that are doing cutting edge and really cool things. So, you know, I think it's the way you explain it to people, but you gotta get in front of them. You gotta show them what the opportunity is. And and you gotta sell it to them, right? You know, this is how we spend our life. So so why should they want to spend their life doing it? I think it's important to be transparent as well, if that makes sense.
No, absolutely. And that's one of the things is the awareness and exposure and getting an opportunity to see people that look like them. And we are here, right? And and those people get a chance to tell their stories. And and that's one of the things that we really enjoyed about having, you know, a black president, right? That says that, okay, you know, it's possible. You know, think about Jackie Robinson, okay, it's possible. And that's what, you know, we have to continue doing as we do that. So we're coming down to some of our last questions I want to kind of hit you with. What are some of the misconceptions about the program and some of the obstacles that you've had to overcome in in doing this program?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, it's it's definitely, it has not been an easy undertaking, right? It's a very ambitious program. You know, we're trying to be a leader as a bank in investing in the black community. We want to be the bank of choice for the black community. We want to help close this racial wealth gap. And it's a daunting undertaking, you know, that we're that we've launched. And we're doing that within the context of America's largest bank, very old institution that's 200 plus years old. And it goes without saying that it's not, it's not easy. We've definitely have had our moment, our growing pains. But I can tell you that because we have the backing of leadership, that's given us the level of political capital that we need within the organization to move forward with our initiatives. It's a firm wide initiative. And you think about a business like JP Morgan, how diverse it is. And you think about a business like JP Morgan, how diverse it is. Advancing Black Pathways is touching every aspect of our business. You know, we're, we're dealing with the philanthropy side. We're dealing with the business side. We're dealing with the investment bank. We're dealing with the consumer bank. We're dealing with the wealth management side of the business. You, technology, you name it, Advancing Black Pathways kind of touches it. And it's, it's massive. It's daunting. And, you know, we're under pressure to show that this is working, right? We're under pressure to show that it's having an impact. And in the back of your mind, you want to succeed because hey, if, if we're not driving the impact, then, you know, will they, will they continue to invest in it, right? So, you know, we have to, it's, you know, it's like we've had to build a plane while we're expected to fly, right? And, you know, we're very much a startup within this bank. So there's a lot of pressure, but it's fun. It's a labor of love too. You know, I think everybody on the Advancing Black Pathways team feels called to be in this job. You know, I was in a very cushy Goldman Sachs job. And I learned about Advancing Black Pathways and my heart skipped a beat. I was like, man, I gotta be part of this. And I was fortunate enough to get the opportunity. It has not been easy, you know? When you get called to do something, you know, it's not going to be easy. But you got to be committed to it. And there's a level of commitment on this team. There's a level of commitment from Tashonda Duckett, our executive sponsor, that, you know, gives us that level of inspiration we need to, to fight these battles. You all have worked in financial services, so you know how it is in these companies. And it's not easy. My gray hairs are multiplying.
Well, don't, don't start showing your gray hair. We got people on the, on the call that was, was starting showing off all their gray hair. So when, when you think of, I know, when you think about the fight, you know, and what you have to, to do inside, how, how can organizations like Urban Financial Services Coalition and members, individuals, members of the community who are in finance? How can we support this effort? How can we, you know, help you overcome some of the challenges that, that we collectively actually face in our industry, in these three lanes of, you know, wealth, education and career success?
You know, I think it starts with engagements like this, talking openly about it, sharing our stories. I think that, you know, it would be great to get you in front of our employees and a similar type of dialogue. You know, it starts with the dialogue and, and understanding what we're all facing. You know, we, we take each other to church in a sense. And then from there, you know, we just have to, you know, identify what those pain points are and then get strategic, right? How are we going to move forward? You know, what are some things that we can do? What are some action steps that we can take? And, and, you know, we have to give each other ideas. We have to hold each other accountable as well. And I think it's important because we are not well represented in this industry. It's important for organizations like this to bring us together, you know, honestly. That's the start.
Absolutely. Well, we'll, we'll, we'll hopefully work with you and, and maybe we'll be in one of these upcoming press releases that you're working on.
I mean, we've got some great stuff. You know, I saw there's a question here about, you know, what are we doing to help black entrepreneurs? How are we supporting black entrepreneurs through our initiatives? And I'll be able to answer that question for you in a more meaningful way by July 6th. I can tell you that.
Absolutely. Well, we got a couple of requests for some of the various data points that you've shared. So, you know, I'll get with your team that we can get some of that, some of that good data that you shared on the call today out to the group. So I'd like to end with these two questions with you. One is if you could go back in time and give a young Justin some career advice? You know, what would it be? And then that's the, the second, the last question would be, you know, what do you want your legacy to be?
Oh, that's a good one. Let, uh, advice to my younger self. Honestly, I would tell my younger self, be fearless, be fearless, right? You know, you, you learn that everybody's trying to fake it till they make it. Just be fearless. You know, I, I remember when I started at that first internship and I, and my first job at Thomson Reuters, it was suffocating, you know, being the only black man, you know, in that newsroom, dealing with colleagues, looking at you like you're some affirmative action hire, which maybe I was, but I still had the talent to be there. And I was good, but you know, this fear and this imposter syndrome and, you know, you're wondering about, do I belong here? I would say to my younger self, man, be fearless. Because once you can get rid of the fear, you know, it's like Neo in The Matrix, right? I don't know if you've seen that movie, but once he was over, once he stopped being scared, he was able to fly and he wasn't falling. And, you know, I, I even tell it to myself now. And yeet comfortable in your skin as you get battle tested, but, you know, be fearless. And then in terms of legacy, you know, thing I live by, you know, righteous man leaves an inheritance even for his grandchildren. And, you know, I'm focused on making sure that my children, you know, inherit more than, than I inherit. And I'm, I'm focused on setting it up for my grandchildren as well. You know, making sure that when they want to put down payments on houses and pay for college and, and do things that normal people do, that white people don't think twice about, if I'm being honest here. You know, that's what I want my legacy to be. It's, it's real simple, real family focused, honestly.
Absolutely. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate your candor today. We appreciate you sharing more information with us. And for all of you who want to learn more about JP Morgan Chase's program, you know, you can click on the link in this PowerPoint. This PowerPoint presentation will be sent out to everyone who registered and participated in today's conversation. Urban Financial Services Coalition, we'll be back next week. We are going to have Sarah Reed, who is the Executive Director with the Men Bank Foundation. And she's also a, a Senior Sales Manager with the American Bankers Association. And she's going to talk about how you can get funding to, you know, position yourself for additional career opportunities in the financial services industry. So it's going to be a great session. If you know a speaker that you think that should be a part of our series and want to be a part of the conversation, you know, please send an email to programs@urbanfinancialprograms@ufscnet.org. We'll get the email. We will track them down. It's great if you make introduction, introduction for us so that it's easier for us to make that connection. But we want this place to be a place where we can have great ideas and thoughts and we can all network and build relationships with each other. And so with that, we also have Jason Matthews. We also believe in supporting African Americans who are writing in the space of financial services. So Jason Matthews, who's the President of the San Francisco Chapter, wrote a book on self-reliance. He'll be speaking in, on July 8th. So you can go on the UFSC website and register for Jason's event. And always, you know, buy a book. You know, that's one of the best ways that we can protest is by investing and, and buying with people that look like us so we can, you know, have that money turn over within our community. I always liked the thing that George Fraser says is that we shouldn't be, we shouldn't want other people to do things that we're not willing to do ourselves. So if we're not willing to invest in our own people, you know, why should we have an expectation that other people do it too? So it's going to be a great session with Jason. And then if you're not a member of Urban Financial Services Coalition, there's plenty of room at the table. We really believe that we are a family and this is the time that we got to come together. And so we want to protest, we want to be in the streets, but we also need to be in the suites. And we get in the suites by being a part of this organization and collectively working together to, you know, handle these three lanes that we talked about, wealth building, educational advancement and career success. And it's really going to take all of us. And if just for an investment in yourself, you know, you become, you empower our community. So consider becoming a member of the organization. And I always, always end with this saying is to be a river and not a reservoir. Oh, what is a reservoir? A reservoir keeps everything in. You know, all the good information, all the good ideas, all the access to capital, all the, you know, intellectual capital keeps it all to itself. But what does a river do? A river shares it with others. And everywhere it goes, it turns things green. It turns relationships green. It turns businesses green. It turns communities green, you know? So let's take the information that we shared tonight, you know, when you get the PowerPoint, share it with someone. You know, pick up the phone, call someone and say, hey, I was on a great session. You know, Jason, I mean, Justin was amazing. You know, he said some good information. Take that information, you share it with others and then say, hey, you know what? We're going to go, we're going to go and join Urban Financial Services Coalition. I'm going to renew my membership. I'm going to get active, I'm going to get excited. I'm going to be a part of the movement because that's how I can be involved. Specifically because we are the professionals in the financial services industry. So that's all I have tonight. Please unmute yourself and join me in thanking Justin for doing a great presentation. And say, and let's, all of us give a good, good night to each other.
Take care. It's good to meet you all. And any questions, just email me and D2, I'll send you that data. But, you know, I put my email address there, so just reach out if you have any questions. I'll answer all of them.
That's why he's the head of communications. Everybody have a good night and thank you so much for participating in the program. Hope to see y'all next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.